Good evening, everyone. I'm welcoming Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, February the 19th, 2019. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Mr. Petraskey, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you. Moving on to the invocation, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. I'd ask that everyone please pause for a moment of silence. We would like to extend condolences to the Pendleton and Anderson families during their time of bereavement. Please continue to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Allott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Moving on to communications, we have none tonight. Moving on to courtesy of the floor. And now I'll take this time for anyone who would like to come to the mic, starting at my right. Please do so now.
Good evening. I'm Dave Schuman at 210 Hur Street. Last weekend I was in here for parking. There was one thing that I need to say that I was going to bring in some, a lot of reports, meaning things regarding potholes. So I've made a copy that's going to go to Joyce Davis.
Yes.
And then also one to City Council. So I'm just announcing this now because it was posted on Nextdoor that I was going to come and do this. Now, my next question is, is when we have our Second Street two-way conversion public meeting, we had one. And I know that me and there are a lot of other citizens here in Harrisburg that would really like to have their meeting about this, to see how far it's gone with the project, because we do have a lot of personal, you know, questions regarding a lot of this. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And sir, Mr. Majors is our Public Works Committee Chair, and he will address the potholes. Do you want to address it now? Do you want to?
Oh, okay. So with respect to potholes, individuals that can report potholes via 311 and also the city's website. In the past, we, there was a, an app called See Click Fix. We are no longer, as a city, working with that app. So, but they can call them in and report them to via 311 and/or the city website on the issue with potholes, and we can work to get them addressed.
Sir, please come to the mic. Thank you.
Excuse me.
That's okay. We want to be able to, want to be able to hear you and record it.
Okay. This last week, what had happened, there was a complaint of calling 311 and couldn't go through. So what happened with Joyce, she went ahead and emailed on Nextdoor as for their, the person to call her. You know, better source.
Right. Better source it, or like I said, if you visit the web, the city's website, and then file a complaint that way, so that there's a, a record of it.
Right.
That can also be.
I can relate to that. I'll just pass that along, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah. An easy way.
Yep.
Thank you. Next, please.
I have one copy if you, if the President would want it.
Sure. Give it to Mr. Petraskey. Thank you. You want to say your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Tim Rowbottom, 333 South Eighteenth Street. I just wrote it down because I get a little frazzled sometimes. I would like to start by thanking you for your ear to hear complaints from the citizens. I would like to start by reciting Mark 923, "If thou canst believe, all things are possible to them that believe. I am that one." This is not a complaint about other residents. This is a complaint about radical property theft amongst a corrupt administration. This is about a mayor who thinks it's okay to give bribes to my acquaintance and me to cover this property theft scheme from surfacing. This part is just a small piece of the real truth. You bribed my partner and tried to fix some issues with me. What were your exact words? "If you go see Larry at the Berg, he will take care of you." Was this meeting at the bookstore part of the bribe? Did you, did you say that you had some connections at the county for my tax situation? I feel this is highly inappropriate to have a conversation about me with someone and give anyone anything without me getting what's mine first. This complaint is about a piece to the property theft scheme as labeled in a handout. I feel led to inform you officially that this was submitted against the code officials Arden Emrick, David Patton, and Jeffrey Knight, Jackie Parker, as the advisor. I'm not submitting, submitting the exhibits, but demand immediate remedy before someone gets killed by your claim to fame, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Rowbottom.
Yes.
I understand that you have a complaint, and I understand that you're very upset with some of our administration. But this is not the proper venue to talk about your complaint.
So you're saying a, a property theft scheme, and even to the point where we have criminal negligence with a property that could kill somebody? And you don't want to hear about it?
No, 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 sir. I do want to hear about it, but I think that it's best if we heard it.
So you're silencing me? You allowed him to, you allowed him to talk, but you're not allowing me?
No, no, sir. I'm not silencing you, but you have a complaint that you're filing against the City of Harrisburg administrators. And what I'm saying to you is that you're publicly giving a complaint without them having an opportunity to debate that, and it's not the venue for that. I would ask that you please.
You're violating my constitutional rights.
No, sir, I'm not, because I will spend.
I like the record.
An hour here after, I will spend an hour here afterwards and hear your complaint, as well as my, my council members. We will acknowledge your complaint, and we will try to work with you regarding the complaint. But I don't like you, you and anyone else coming before this council and berating any administrators or any of our council members without giving us due process to.
So people are only allowed to talk if you like what they have to say?
That's not it, sir.
That's not what this is for. This is about having public comment heard for issues in the city.
And you have an issue, but you have a complaint that you're telling us about the whole complaint.
How do you know? Did you read it already?
Yes. Yes, sir. I just briefly went through it.
So what does it say? Please just tell me, so I understand.
Well, I'm not going to stand here, I'm not going to sit here and go back and forth because I don't have to, because I have the right to shut you down.
I appreciate that.
But I don't want to do that. I want to give you an.
Is that racially charged?
No. No, sir. It's not racially charged. Why should it be racially charged? And I'm not going to do that, batter back and forth.
Madam President.
But I asked you just a minute, please.
It'll go down on the record. It's all right.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I told you I would meet with you afterwards and discuss this with you.
I will have afterwards. I have an official time that I can sign in for.
Madam President, I, I think it's also important, since we did receive a copy of the complaint, that that complaint be attached with any, with the record, so that the record will reflect your comments in total, since we do have a written copy of the.
I have the whole complaint. This is the whole complaint.
And sir, and Mr. Majors, before you interrupted me and asked for that, that time to speak, I was going to tell Mr. Rowbottom that we will put this, Rowbottom, that we will attach this to your complaint, and we will include this in.
Even more so, because it's not about proving my point.
Right.
Please read it.
Oh, sir, I'm going to.
I mean, just please read it, because right now, there's people's lives in jeopardy, and that, that, I started off on something that it wasn't going to end with, and, and it involves a property that is criminally negligent and could hurt a lot of people real easy. And I submitted a copy to the UCC, and it's, it should be public record.
Is that?
And we can make it public record, sir. As you have already made a complaint, you have already sent a copy to UCC, so it is public.
Right.
Okay. You've already made a complaint to Department of State, so it is.
This is just like the first of about 15.
And that's fine. You have the right to do that. But I asked you to wait a couple minutes, so after the meeting's over, we will sit with you and talk with you.
One last thing for the record. Is this every time that I want to come in here and voice anything, you're not going to allow me?
It is not. You can come and, and speak about something that's, that's maybe your potholes, the trash.
So you're going to tell me what I'm allowed to complain about?
No, you're talking about a complaint that you're civilly filing against the administration. Okay?
Yeah, this is, this is a public complaint that was made about a property where I had a three-foot piece of concrete almost fall and kill me.
But we are involved in civil complaint with you, in civil litigation with you, Mr. Rowbottom.
How?
Okay.
Did I file anything? Do you have a factual documentation to that?
Would you like to?
I'm just asking. I mean, you keep making statements that aren't truthful.
Would you like to meet afterwards? Because at this point, I'm going to cut the conversation.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Mayor, and the rest.
My name is Butts, Louis Butts, 612 Seneca Street. Right now, I'm in the middle of an issue that is very disturbing, not just to me, but 10 other congregations in the city. There are 10 different churches, United Methodist churches, that are shutting down. Now, we're talking about spirituality. And it, it burdens me so that a lot of residents won't have a place to worship in, in the very near future. I don't know what transpired, all the, all the motions for the United Methodist Conference, Susskellina Conference, to target 10 churches in Harrisburg, and not the spread out of the Susskellina Conference, which is crosses Cumberland County all over. I mean, I've, I've been a United Methodist, belonging to the Susskellina Conference, for several years. And when they're trying to balance their, their books, they usually spread the, kick the can throughout the conference, which is huge. I don't understand how the United Methodist Conference got the ability to say, "We're going to take the spirituality and the ability to the residents, for the residents of the City of Harrisburg not to attend churches." And not only that, they want to take my, they want to, they want to disperse and eliminate my church. You know what I'm saying? That's the crazy part. Because sometimes it don't really, the problem really doesn't roost at home, but it's actually roosting at home for me. And I've been here on several different, several different years, on several different topics, on how important the Camp Curtin Church is to Harrisburg tourism, and the things that we can do to bring in revenue. Why would you want to spike your nose if the church that is doing well gets eliminated or disbanded? We have soup kitchens, we have everyday, I mean, these are the things that go on. We have a free daycare for, for mothers and, that go to work, and they can't pay for daycare. The church supports that sector in the community. We have AA meetings in which the community who was dealing with sobriety, they come there every day to maintain their sobriety. These are functional entities that, as African-American communities, we, we thrive on because they help with some of the services and that, some of the needs that we have in our communities that other entities can't fulfill. Now, if you eliminate the churches, then you eliminate a lot of the resources that these people have in these deprived communities. Now, I worked hard with, with teams to register the church as a national historic landmark and monument, and there were several years that we worked hard to make sure that these historical landmarks are preserved and secured. Other churches don't have everything that the Camp Curtin United Methodist Church has, and they won't, they won't, they won't win the battle between this fight. I need for council to understand how important spirituality is in the City of Harrisburg.
But can I interrupt you for a minute? I think each one of us understands the importance of, of the role that the churches, the Methodist churches play in the City of Harrisburg. My question to you is that, what would you like council to do to help you with this problem? Because it goes further, it goes further than the City of Harrisburg.
Well, the door, well, the door to the solution, or the cure, may not be open now or the window, but there may be something that comes around, and your heart, or somebody's individual heart, that might step out the norm and say, "This is not right." You know, it might not, you may not have the answer now, and I may not have the answer for you, because as a member, I'm doing what I can to fight the battle and make people aware of it.
Well, if there's anything that we can assist you personally, each of, each and every one of us individually, we certainly will do that, sir. But as it stands at this point, the city cannot, does not have any authority as far as the closing of the Methodist churches. And I understand the impact that it would have on the City of Harrisburg, because we utilize those churches from a variety of, of services.
Well, just what these guys could possibly do. If you can designate, if you can help designate the Camp Curtin area as a hollow ground, as a district, as a historical district, that would help to substantiate and validate what the Camp Curtin district was historically. Maybe even partner, again, with the Civil War Museum to bring more federal funds for the tourism dollars that brings in revenue. I mean, there are things that alls we have to do is act like we're anybody else, like Gettysburg. They have things that they use for revenue. We need to do that if we're looking for res, revenue. Tourism is, is, what, number one or number two? Now, the other thing that I have to, to state that we need more energy than our schools. Our schools are, are a problem. I don't know how the administration can help out with the school district. But we need to find some kind of bridge to where there can be some kind of help to the school district, because they're, they're frolicking now. I'm, I'm getting ready to run to the school, the school board meeting right now.
We've been always open to assist the school district in any capacity that we can.
And I, and I, and I appreciate you. I'm just, I'm just turning on another, another light.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Just turning on another light.
Okay.
And I do appreciate you in, in respect and sincerity. And I know these guys are doing a lot, a hard job, and you're keeping, keeping the fire burning, and I appreciate you. But I'm just not here for the gigs, you know? But it's a serious thing that we're fighting when it comes to our, our spirituality within the schools, as well as on the streets of Harrisburg. And it's good to have an administration and a, and a council that has the same type of soul.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
You, too, as well. Anyone else, please, to my right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Pardon me?
Can I, one more time?
Come on. There's no one else over there.
Everything that he just said is important, and I know what it's all about. The churches are dwindling because they don't have enough finances. But I know as, if you have the belief of Jesus Christ, I know that it's going to happen within my house, that I'm going to even have on a Friday to come watch the movie Ever Risen, because all we really need to do is, there's a lot of oddballs that don't go to church anymore. And all we really need to do is bring some gathering and have some love of Jesus Christ, and we do it within our communities. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Moving on with the agenda. Prove of minutes, prove of the legislative session minutes of January 9th, 2019. Council members, any omissions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, minister, will withstand as approved. Moving on to reports to committee, report from Chair Williams on the work session of January 22nd, 2019, and February 13th, 2019. Good evening. I have several items coming out of my committee tonight, but firstly, I want to ask my colleagues for affirmative vote on Mr. Monier for the Planning Commission, and Ms. Little, and Ms. Burrell for the Human Relations Commission. There are three great candidates, and I thank each and every last one of them for their service and their willingness to serve on these committees. Secondly, at the work session on February 12th, we discussed a contract with Maverick Strategies, and City Council had a few concerns moving forward. We added some language that reads as follows. Reporting, contractor shall provide reports to City Council on a quarterly basis. The city reserves the right to withhold payment for failure to provide such reports in a timely manner. Additionally, we removed the language about renewing the agreement automatically. City Council would like to review this on an annual basis and hear from Maverick on their progress before automatically renewing this agreement. We thank them and administration for having an open discussion about this process, and we look forward to improving the line of communication. If no other comments, I'd ask my colleagues to support Resolutions 1, 2, and 3, and we are going to remove Resolution 92, which is a resolution authorized in the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with Maverick Strategies. Thank you. Moving on to report from Chair Allott on the work session of January 22nd, 2019, and February 13th, 2019. Mr. Allott, are you ready with your report?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for discussion on the work session was the first proposed budget reallocation for 2019, which is Resolution 8. This is a resolution that deals with the encumbrances, which is rolling over leftover orders and purchase orders, and, and things have not been expended in 2018 to 2019. So this resolution basically will cover those items that are encumbered from the general fund, from public work projects, state liquid fuel revenue, and host municipality fund, as well as, pardon me, as, as well as Neighborhood Services Fund. So all this resolution typically does is just take things left over from 2018 and apply them to the 2019 expenditures. And I'd ask for my colleagues to vote in affirmative for this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Moving on to report from Chair Madsen on the work session of January 22nd, 2019, and February 13th, 2019. Mr. Madsen, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. Yeah. So on January 22nd, City Council had a work session. During the session, we discussed Resolution 5, which just provided clarification over $120,000 of the CDBG funds for 2018, that essentially was not a line item in the initial report. So essentially, what we went and just reviewed over the $120,000 to make sure there wasn't any irregularities. We found none. And essentially, moving to approve that that $120,000 line item is in the CDBG funds. Moving on to Resolution 6. On February 13th, City Council had a work session and discussed Resolution 6. Based off that discussion, council agreed to allocating the funds, but we will write a letter requesting the funds. In the letter will be an option to provide matching funds for any grants awarded by Impact Harrisburg. Also in the letter, the city will consider other funding sources. And I would ask that my colleagues support both resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none. And we then move on to ordinance for final passage, we have none. We move on to resolutions, and as I indicated, Resolution 92, 2018, with the contract with Maverick Strategies, will be removed from the agenda. And please note that the reason that we're removing this particular resolution is because we, council just about five or six hours ago, received the billing invoices that we requested at our last committee session. And we do need clarification on some of the items that were listed on the invoice. So we've asked several times for this information, and we just got it at the 12th hour, and we're not ready to vote on that particular resolution at this time. We are going to request that Maverick Strategies please come back into our work sessions. There are additional questions that we do have to ask of them. So we're moving on to Resolution 1, 2019. Mr. Petraskey, please read the end to record.
Resolution 1 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Zachary R. Monier to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
Any questions or comments on Resolution Number 1? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 2, 2019.
Resolution 2 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the reappointment of Ms. Gretchen M. Little to serve on the Harrisburg Human Relation Commission for one-year term.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 2 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 3.
Resolution 3 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Kevin E. Burrell to serve on the Harrisburg Human Relation Commission for a one-year term.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 3 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 4.
Resolution 4 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allott, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Mayor Jerusalem certified public accountants to audit the City of Harrisburg's annual audit and financial report, DCD CLGS, for the year ending December 31st, 2018.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 4 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 5, as amended.
As amended, Resolution 5, 2019, was moved by Mr. Allott, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution to correct the ordinance for 2018 appropriating community development block grant funds for the fiscal year 2018 by inserting a line item under housing and community development activities for emergency demolition expenses in the amount of $120,000, which amount is currently included in the total CDBG funds for the amount of $2,43,831 for fiscal year 2018.
Any questions or comments as amended? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 5, as amended, passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 6.
Resolution 6 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg affirming the commitment to seek funding from Impact Harrisburg for a position within the administration to promote community economic development within the City of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments, council members? Mr. Madsen, I think you have some, a comment to make with that? Are you going to, you're going to wait and just include it with that?
Yes, understanding.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Mr. Allett?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 6 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 8.
Resolution 8 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allett, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution approving the first proposed 2019 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 8? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allett?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 8 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 10.
Resolution 10 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allett, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Trout, Ebersohn, Roth, LP CPAs, and business advisors to conduct and reconciliation for the compensated absences liability and neighborhood fund receivable accounts of the city of Harrisburg for the year ending December 31, 2018.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 11.
Resolution 11 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Brian Humphrey to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
That will be placed in the Administration Committee. Council members, are there any old business that you'd like to speak of? Hearing none, how about new business? Mr. Major?
So, let's go ahead.
No?
All right.
He's giving the floor to you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Councilman Major, I appreciate it. Thank you, President Williams. First, I would like to commend our police department for seizing over 600 guns and getting them off the streets of Harrisburg over the last three years. Just goes to show you how every day they're out there putting their lives on the line to make sure our city is safe. I'd also like to compliment our police, our fire department, excuse me, for their work on the fire on Rotner Street this past week. They did an awesome job with making sure the fire was out, even with the explosion and the issues they had with the fire hydrant. Once again, it just goes to show you how every day our first responders are out there interacting with our city and making sure we're safe, whether it's putting out fires, getting guns off the streets, or talking to our youth. So thank them for their service, and if you see one, just say thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Majors?
Yes, thank you, President Williams. Well, the first thing I wanted to do was send a big thank you to our folks in our Public Works Department. Our last, our last session, we would have had, but we were all due to inclement weather. Just wanted to thank them for all the hard work that they do, ensuring that our streets get cleared during the inclement weather, and as well as being one of the only municipalities in our region that continued trash collection during the storm. Those guys are, you know, put in long hours, and, you know, their service does not go without being recognized. I personally thanked Dave West and Aaron recently, but I definitely wanted to make sure that it was reflected on the record that the citizens of Harrisburg appreciate all their hard work. And we got another impending storm supposed to hit us tomorrow, so, you know, while some folks may not be able, may not be attending work tomorrow, those guys will be in, ensuring that our streets get cleared so that the folks that do have to come to work in our city have access to our roads. Again, I just wanted to send a sincere thank you for that. Additionally, to the conversation we're having earlier about reporting information regarding our streets, you can submit a ticket through the website, harrisburgpa.gov. If 311 doesn't work, I think personally having a record that has some sort of confirmation that a actual ticket was submitted to the city could help us, you know, be able to track some of those things. I know we had talked about our tracking and our reporting last year, and I'm sure we'll be looking to get an update on that as well. And another aside, just for the public, I just wanted to, well, I know Council President Williams and I both recently attended the Singer's Lounge. They celebrated their third anniversary to an event that is put on by Harrisburg residents. It's led by Ms. Erin Smallwood, and they put on an event, this is their third year. It's usually every third Sunday in Harrisburg, and this one was held at H Mac. And it was just a great event, you know, for the community to come together, listen to some music, and just really celebrate and have a good time. It was an excellent event. And just for me, lastly, I wanted to put a plug out here. On Thursday, February 21, the Men of Five Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated will be holding, hosting a fatherhood forum.